We'll open this meeting in Tiverton Township, Pennsylvania. To the United States of America and to your fellow citizens. One nation under our individual property and justice law.
Ready for roll call?
Roll call, please.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor Roderick.
Present.
Counselor Ruda.
Present.
Counselor Durfee.
Here.
Counselor Bowlin.
Here.
Counselor Leonard.
Present.
And Counselor Costa.
Yep.
You're all present.
Tonight's consent agenda assist approval of minutes from the April 13, 2009 regular council meeting. I'm down again. Test one, test three, four, five. Nope.
Where is Mr. Rice when we need him?
He's down there fixing it. Hold three, two, one. Test one. If he doesn't get him on, I can speak louder.
Speak up.
I guess I gotta speak up. Tonight's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes of the April 27, 2009 regular council meeting. Counselor Bowlin abstained, not present. Received minutes from the following boards and commissions. Personnel Board, three. Prevention Coalition, recreation, three. School Department, two. Waste Water Management, zoning board, cemetery, and Board of Canvases. Correspondence received and filed. Received from Rhode Island statewide coalition regarding resolution to eliminate the straight party ballot in Rhode Island elections. Received from City of Warwick related to legislation authorized in cities and town councils to ratify school teacher contracts. Received from Town of North Kingston regarding council resolution supporting repeal of Carrulo Act. And received from Town of Richmond regarding support to repeal Carrulo Act. Scheduled joint public hearing with planning board regarding comprehensive community plan update on council meeting for June 22, 2009. That's tonight's consent agenda.
Mr. President, I would like to re-rule from tonight's consent agenda A, three, B, C, and D.
I approve that the rest of the consent agenda be approved.
Second. Motion made in second to approve the rest of the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. So we'll move to 3B.
Yes, well, reading these correspondence from these related communities as it relates to ratifying school teacher contracts and repealing the Carrulo Act, I just wanted to go on the record to say that I would not be in support of any one of those.
Anyone else with any comments?
It's been my understanding that all we're doing is acknowledging the receipt of the correspondence. We haven't had any discussion on the merits of any of those issues.
That's correct.
So I think we should simply acknowledge, yes, we received the correspondence. We note the attachments and we move on. We're not considering these items on our notice.
And a motion to receive them is an order.
I'm so moved. Well, I would. That would be my opinion.
Well, the only thing that I would suggest is the fact that the way that it was written is that these towns are in favor of doing just that.
They are, but until we send the response to the affirmative or to the negative, we've taken no action on that and we've done so in the past. What's on the agenda tonight is to receive these as correspondence. And if someone wishes to take an action on it, they have to be placed on our agenda for action.
Okay. That's fine. Just a clarification.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? We have a proclamation. Whereas the Father Joseph Borre Council of the Knights of Columbus was established in Tiverton on April 5, 1959, some 50 years ago, and whereas the members of this council have distinguished themselves in strong support of family life and in the service to all people of Tiverton, and whereas the Tiverton Council of the Knights of Columbus has grown into an organization of well over 500 families, and whereas the Tiverton Council of Knights of Columbus is known for their many charitable deeds, and whereas the town council at its regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, May 11, 2009, by motion made and unanimously passed, it proclaimed Saturday, May 30, 2009, Tiverton Father Joseph Borre Council Knights of Columbus Day. Being further proclaimed that every official and citizen of the town of Tiverton is requested to recognize and pay all due respect to the Knights of Columbus by order of Tiverton Town Council.
I will move that the proclamation as read be adopted.
Second. Motion made in seconded to adopt the proclamation. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is by unanimous vote. Financial business, town administrator requests transfer of funds for state 61,000 from various accounts listed on attached summary to account 112999, state aid reduction.
I would make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the town administrator.
Town administrator amended that just with regard to both the, and requested that the unemployment security in the amount of 10,000 be transferred to litigation. I just noted that for that.
That was the handout this evening that corrected that transfer request. In addition to the 36,000, I'd like to add another 10,000. And going to litigation.
I would amend my motion to make it clear that the total amount of funds being transferred is $46,000.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made in seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Sitting as a Board of Licensing Commissioners, public hearing advertised. Ujan Incorporated Doing Business Little Bear Sports Lounge, 983 Main Road, requesting full liquor BV license, subject to meeting all legal requirements, required, requested continuance to May 26 for additional advertising. And the same for the entertainment licenses, request to continue to May 26 for additional advertising.
Excuse me, what was that request?
Just for formality, if you can open the, since we advertised it somewhat for this, if you could open the public hearing and then have a motion to continue it for that date.
Okay, we'll open the public hearings for Little Bear Sports Lounge at 983 Main Road. Now, entertain a motion to continue to May 26.
I'd make a motion to continue, but I have a question. And that is, where was the problem with the advertising?
The clerk advertised and when she sent it to the newspaper, they did not put it in the first week that she had advertised, so statute requires that it go.
Three weeks.
That be advertised for the three weeks, which would push us to the next. Rather than re-advertising, we have to notice everyone.
Thank you.
I'll second Louise's motion. Motion in second, continue the public hearing to May 26. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Sitting as a Board of Licensing Commissioners for non-advertised licenses, Sir Terrace Pavilas Doing Businesses, Anna Seafood, 2490 Main Road, request approval of vitroling license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is anyone here from? Yeah. Please. Does anyone have any questions of the petition?
Did you take over, because we were speculating as to where you were located, are you located? Did you take over the whole enchilada?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
The old thing I do seafood, they used to have Mexican food there, so.
And this is gonna be a fast food takeout?
Yes.
Fritters? Fritters?
It's a fast food restaurant, you know, like.
We'll have to go see the menu.
You better put coags in those fritters.
Is that gonna be conditionable?
What will be the hours of operation?
It would be, given that it's at 8 o'clock, at the same time the ice cream shop is open, so probably that will be that time.
I'll make a motion that the virtual license be granted.
I'll second that. Subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Subject to, that's a given.
Motion made in seconded, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Skyron Incorporated, 1701 Stafford Road, request approval of holiday license, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
I'll make the motion to adopt the holiday license for this Skyron Incorporated Stafford Road, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second. Motion made in seconded, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Roger Dupont, 28 Salisbury Street, request renewal of private detective's license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. It appears that the bond has been posted, so I'd make a motion that license be issued. Second. Again, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Yes. Okay. Motion made in seconded, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Ujan Incorporated Doing Business Little Bear Lounge, 983 Main Road, request vitroling license, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
That should be continued as well.
Why do we have to continue with the vitroling license if it's non-advertised?
Well, some of the issues, like the fire department stuff and whatnot, would apply to vitroling license as well. My understanding is, I talked to the chief here, I talked to the state last week, they're working on all that, that should all be done, but I think it'd be a little premature until we have the sign off on that. I know you make it subject to legal requirements, but.
The point of the matter is, if someone, the individual could open a business without the liquor part of the business, you know, we're delaying him another two weeks because if he resolves any issues and meets the legal requirements, he would be allowed to open. And if this is not a required advertised public hearing, to delay it with the advertised public hearing, you know, may further delay someone opening a business.
On the other hand, there may be issues that merge with the other issues, so, I mean, let's keep it clean, they have one hearing. So I'll make a motion that that matter be continued and we hold the entire public hearing on the 26th.
Second. We have a motion in second to continue to the 26th of May. All those in favor? Propose? Motion carries. Appointments of resignations, interview and appointment for the harbor master, annual appointment to June 2010. I believe we have one withdrawal from this and that's Stephen Trinidad. That's correct. Oh, the other two candidates are here?
Yes.
Mr. Vaneer?
Yep.
Good evening, Mr. Vaneer.
How are you this evening?
Well.
Okay, any questions from the council?
I'll lead off with my traditional question of why are you interested in the position and what will you bring to the position?
What I will bring is a lot of enthusiasm. The reason I'm interested is I had some issues in the past with existing harbor master and I felt that things needed to be done and done in a better manner. So I'm here to prove that that could be done and that's basically why I'm here.
Without commenting on the past, but what areas would you like to see improvement in?
I'd like to see more efficiency on mornings going out on time, record keeping. I'd like to see, you know, things put on computer and computerized, record keeping. I'd like to make sure that each morning's tagged and labeled. There seems to be a lot of mornings that are mislabeled or not labeled at all. There's nothing on top of them, no stickers, no writing, so on and so forth, so I think we need to get a handle on that.
Now, your availability?
My availability is I work from 7:00 to 3:30 in the afternoon. I get out at 3:30, I'm available on weekends, available in the evenings, available, you know, early mornings. During the day, I am a supervisor at Brighton Point Power Station in Somerset. I have some ability to come and go at different times if I need to, but it's not always the case. I won't always be able to drop things and leave at a moment's notice. I'll be up front.
I believe you did say in your paperwork how long you've lived in the town.
Yes, since 1991.
Since 1991.
I moved in in 1991, bought a house on East Mellow, down in the south, and off of Grand, off of East Road, Grand Little Road.
Have you read the harbor management plan?
Yes, I have. That along with the municipal code, section 14, and very versed in it. And there are some discrepancies between the, what's in the municipal code and what's in the town charter. So those things also need to be treated up.
Good. What is that discrepancy, would you tell me?
There's a couple of different things. One of them was the procedure on how to do this. One of them says that the coastal resource commission 42, I think it's section 42, 1442, it says that they will be interviewed also by the harbor commission and that the harbor commission would make their recommendation to the town council. And then in the town charter, it says that person employed does the interviewing. That's one of some of the discrepancies.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. Dylan Fornia?
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And I will start off the same way. Why are you interested in the position and what will you bring to the position?
I'm interested because I love being on the water. Been boating my whole life. Last year I lived on Main Road, on waterfront residence, and I witnessed all the wake zone violators and jet skis in the basin. And I love to put a stop to that. As well as people tying up the mornings and coming along to them. Seen many people in violation of that as well. I think I bring good availability to the table. I work in Tiverton, I live in town most of the time. I'm self-employed. I'm able to leave a job at a moment's notice when it's a call. And I believe I could be as standish within 15 to 20 minutes of any emergency situation.
Mr. Fornia, have you read that harbor management plan?
Have.
You have? You see areas of improvement?
Oh, I believe so, absolutely, yes. These gentlemen, for me, stated some of the most important ones. I agree with them.
And you've read the charter as regards to the duties of the harbor master?
Anyone else?
Looking through your information, even though you said you've been around the water, could you expand on that a little bit more about what is your experience on the water, around the water?
Well, I started off sailing very young. Moved to a bow in 18 foot bow ladder. I've also owned a 28 foot boat, bow boat. Currently own a sailboat again. As far as certifications, coast guard, safety course, I don't currently have that. I'd be more than willing to seek out on my own certifications that would be required. I'm also SCUBA certified.
You are currently SCUBA certified?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, counsel, what's your pleasure?
If I may, Mr. President, I would like to ask a question of Mr. Goncalo.
Yes, your pleasure.
May or may not choose to comment. One of the things that strikes me as different between the two candidates is the degree of availability, one being self-employed, the other being employed by a company outside of town. Do you have any experience or knowledge in terms of how often there is a need for the harbor master to respond on short notice, say, within 15, 20 minutes? And that's somewhat of an unfair question, but.
No, no, I haven't.
No, you don't know or just haven't had any really experience to have a feel for that?
I haven't had enough experience to have it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, is there a question we could ask of the chiefs?
Yeah, we can ask of anybody who's available. I mean, anybody from the harbor commission here?
Mr. President, it does happen on a fairly regular basis. However, we've set up a policy that in an emergency situation when the boat needs to be launched, the certified people from the fire department will launch the boat, but we do call the harbor master. At times, we have met with him at the dock, but it is fairly regular that we are called on a regular basis to have him respond. It's a policy we do together. The boat is owned by the harbor commission, but we do use it for an emergency purpose. We say at least over the summer, about 20 times this summer, we've been called out.
Now, does that tend to be on?
During the workday or on weekends?
Both. Especially with the kids out in the summer, we've had sailboat rescues, people getting stuck in the gut coming through Stone Bridge, south of the islands, down the Fodland. We've had problems with people, either jet skis, boats have gone over, people have gone overboard. Usually on the weekends, the harbor master boat is usually on the water, so it's a little bit quicker response.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to add?
Oh, yeah, I have, we do have some. We have taken the time to have some of the police officers certified in the boating courses to assist the harbor master. And the harbor master was offered the same courses at the police academy. So we do have personnel available also.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? Okay, I have a question also, I don't know if Mr. Goncalo can answer it. Do we know what certifications are required for the harbor master? Do we know what certifications are required for the harbor master?
I'm currently looking into that at this time because we are looking to recruit some volunteers and we'll know what the requirements are. And we're also getting some information from the trust as to what they require. There's a substantial amount of law enforcement in there as well. The harbor master is the police on the water in the harbor, so he needs to know what the laws are, I suppose. And needs my blessing, you know, the blessing of the fleet, that one boat, letting you take care of that.
Do we have a record of any enforcements? Chief?
With the experience we had in the past with the drownings and the missing person off the boat, we have not had any real enforcement out there personnel wise, that's why the officers were certified. We rarely have them out there, other than the fact we are called for someone out there acting up or operating a boat, to intoxicate it. Unless we're called, I don't know why we're called. Is that your question?
Yeah, sort of, I know Mr. Fornia said there were certain things that were going on in the course that he thought should be stopped and.
If a boat is sighted, where would he come to? The municipal court or does he?
Municipal court would be the usual procedure first, yes.
I guess we'd have to look at our records.
Yeah, I guess, but nothing has been brought by the police department?
No. Be a good place to start, the summer, but again, it takes man hours and some long time.
Yeah.
Mr. President, it's a tough choice. And I appreciate the fact that both gentlemen are willing to step forward, but if I look at the background of Mr. Vaneer. But if I look at the background of Mr. Vanier, he's more currently up to date on more of the nautical-type certifications. So I would make a motion that we appoint him as the Harbor Master, just to get things moving.
A motion to appoint David Vanier as the Harbor Master?
Second.
There's a second to that. Are there any other nomination, are there any other requests? If not, then we'll take a vote on that. All those in favor of the appointment of David?
Before we do that, one thing I would like to say, I do think there are two good candidates. And I frankly was impressed with Mr. Fornia's straightforward approach with regard to certain things that are going on. On the other hand, Mr. Vanier really did suggest that we need to tighten the whole operation. I was impressed with that, so...
I recently attended a Harbor Commission meeting, and some of the concerns that Mr. Vanier have are the same concerns that the Harbor Commission has. And I found that to be at least moving us forward in a direction so that the two can work together instead of opposing each other. And maybe we're going to get some of the mooring issues, which, believe it or not, are a main contributor to our funds for this town.
Can I ask how long the term of the appointment is?
One year.
It's an annual appointment.
An annual appointment until 2010.
And I would, no matter how the vote goes, I do, would like to suggest, and the town clerk will have to remind us, that as we reappoint, that we get the recommendation of the Harbor Commission with regard to the role played by the Harbor Master.
Maybe the best action would be to refer this whole matter to the Harbor Commission, which is what the rules are called for anyway.
The unfortunate part about that is this has even been delayed to this point. And the mooring issues are right there before them at this time. And to delay this any further is going to put us in some trouble with that. And I think that's the reason we moved this up.
I see the others nodding their heads.
To this point. No, I think Jim suggested to me that we really needed to get this thing moving forward because we have that issue of issuing the mooring permits and so forth. And getting those records straightened out, and it's something that needs to be done pretty quick. I'd like to thank everybody who did apply. And don't forget, we are going to be using positions. If you don't get an appointment, there's going to be positions for volunteers on this, which I think, you know, which is going to require a certification to put somebody one step closer in the future when we do need, you know, to change the Harbor Master for whatever reason, so. We have before us a motion and a second to appoint David Vanier as the Harbor Master until June 2010. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you both, gentlemen. And again, make sure you see the administrative, because they are going to be putting other people on the boat, so, you know. And I think we've used assistant Harbor Masters in the past, so that may be something you look at. Thank you. Unfinished business, Counsel O'Leary, establishing major council goals as discussed at workshop.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, really goes back to the workshop we had back on March 30th. We've deferred the action on this several times to extend the courtesy to all councilors that they could be here. What the councilors have in front of them and attached to the agenda is the goals that we discussed back on March 30th. Two of them have been slightly modified. You'll see that the very first one, within the parentheticals, has been added alternate energy sources such as wind power, so that the entire goal would be support Economic Development Commission work with focus on North Main Road revitalization, alternate energy sources such as wind power, and industrial park development. The second goal, which has been slightly modified, actually, it was considerably modified, now reads establish guidelines for employee contracts, which it's noted will require a multiple-year period, including standardization in terms of all municipal collective bargaining contracts. The last four goals were, as we discussed at the workshop, completion of comp plan approved by the state and commence follow-up of ordinance revision, make certain the Bay Street contamination area gets sued through stimulus funding, control the budget and taxes and keep any tax increase well within state mandate caps, work with all committees to create an effective budget. And with those minor modifications, we pretty well reached consensus on those back in March 30th. So I would make a motion that we officially vote on them. And again, these are goals. It's nothing that is etched in granite by any means.
For the purposes of discussion, I'll second the motion.
Motion being seconded, now discussion.
I would like to have Jim comment on goal number two, standardizing terms of all municipal collective bargaining contracts. Given the fact that they are very different departments, you can add a comment on that?
Well...
Speak up.
I think we have a model contract for all department heads that will standardize that process.
Yep.
And we will be attempting to standardize all the facets within that so that they will all be equal across. And we're doing the same thing with the collective bargaining units. We have negotiated one contract at this point. We have three more to go. And we will be looking to standardize all of the benefit packages and a lot of the items that are in it so that it's equal, so that one cannot play against another. But obviously, this takes time as we go through the process.
Frankly, I can't remember who proposed the modification at the workshop. But at that workshop, we did note it's going to take a long time just because of the cycle of contracts. And I think also, if I remember the workshop correctly, it was acknowledged that with different bargaining units being represented by different unions, for example, the Teamster contract is always going to have certain specific things that the Teamsters Union requires or prefers. And it's never going to be 100% universal, just by the nature of the way our employees are represented.
I think if you standardize it, though, the issues become, even if it's something different, you have to have some kind of formula to calculate that the benefit amount is equal across the board. And as long as that's accomplished, it's going to accomplish what Jim is talking about so that nobody can play a benefit to someone else, like they get, we get, we don't get, and so forth and so on. So standardizing benefits in agreements can be accomplished. The terminology is, you know, I know it's, I believe the Teamsters don't participate in our health care.
Right.
And participate through the Teamster health care.
Through the Teamsters, yep.
And it's easy enough to calculate a dollar amount and see where they fit. And co-payments have to be adjusted so that those numbers become equal numbers. That's what I think Jim is trying to say we're going to accomplish, you know, in the forward with these contracts.
Yeah. The reason why I raised it is that you just pointed out something. The Teamsters do not participate in our health. And so, standardizing the absolute terms may not be the proper phrase. Standardizing the benefit packages...
Yes.
Probably...
Costs to the town.
Yeah, cost to the town.
So we would want to strike standardized term and substitute?
I'd say, what about standardizing costs or...
Benefits.
Yeah.
Standardizing benefits of all municipal collective, you know. Of course, they're not going to be the same, but the benefits should be, you know.
Yeah, benefits broadly.
Yep.
Okay.
And I would modify my motion to reflect that change.
And the second goal will second the amendment?
We have a motion and a second to accept the goal that's set by the council from March 30th for a two-counts workshop.
Continuing discussion, Mr. President. The make certain that Bay Street contamination area gets sued through the stimulus funding. Obviously, you know, we have to know where we are with that, obviously, with the first round of stimulus already out. And now there's rumors that there may be a second go-round. So one way or the other, we have to know whether or not if our town administrator in those departments are seeking the funding for those particular projects. We have applied for the funding. We have not heard yea or nay at this point.
But it should still be listed as the goals we've accepted and adopted. Because the comp plan approval by state and commence follow-up ordinance revisions is something else that's already in the works and processing as we're going to a public hearing on...
June 22nd?
June 22nd, yeah. So, you know, that one's in the works. Some of these are already, you know, again, the control of the budget and tax issues, those we're working on and pretty much been completed for this year, but we're going to list them as, well, yes, they are.
Next year is not that far away.
Yes.
I will move the question.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt the goal discussed at the March 27th with revisions that's discussed this evening. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Counsel O'Leary, policy for town website.
Mr. President, in this case, I will ask our town solicitor where he stands on that. I will also note that the Economic Development Commission is working to develop an enhanced website. And that is not completed, it's in progress. But that would lend a little bit of urgency to an overall policy, so we have things headed in the same direction. But I would ask the solicitor, when he would have that policy for us to...
Last Thursday, it's in your packet.
Yep, I just checked.
This is a draft, I marked it draft.
That's what made me a little nervous.
No, I just put a draft because it hasn't been adopted and there wasn't much guidance as to what you were looking for in a policy. There are a lot of policies out there. This is a compilation of several things out there, including some nice disclaimer language. I think what you probably want to look at the most is the stuff to the, I gathered some of the conflict currently was over the issue of the links, about who or can or cannot link to the website, what you want there. I've given a series of, you know, things we will link to and things we won't link to. Basically, given the webmaster, the day-to-day authority, questions to the webmaster, get appeal to the town administrator, and if there's still no satisfaction, then they come to the town council. Other than that, it's, you know, if you want to adopt it tonight, I think it's ready to be adopted tonight. If you want to have more chance to study it or send me back with other direction, whatever your pleasure.
I just have one question for Jim. In the second of thirty-seven, it says all information for posting should be prepared for posting, and the town shall be routed by the webmaster. Would you feel comfortable that, you know, you could, someone could just go to the webmaster to get something posted?
Well, the webmaster has specific instructions from me.
Okay.
Okay, then obviously, nothing controversial, no, you know, opinions of any kind. And generally, the most of what he receives is agendas and minutes of meetings. Before he does anything else, he usually touches base.
He checks it, okay.
And that would be the purpose of this policy, to have it there. It would make sense to have every, you know, every posting of every meeting agenda go through a gym.
Right.
But this gives guidance as well in case someone says, well, you know, what is he basing his decision on? Well, now, we got a policy.
Yes, well, as this...
Which basically is, you know, we're only going to have people who provide some benefit that people in the town are going to be looking for, whether it be a nonprofit or business within the town. Not going to have any political statements on it or individual homepages or anybody advocating a position. So it's clearly going to be a non-political site. People want to have their political sites, they can, but it's not going to be this one, and they're not going to even be linked to this one.
I think the thing for us to do is to adopt the policy. And if it needs amending, next week or next meeting, we'll amend it.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I would move that we adopt the policy.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the town website policy. And it does state in there, Doc, that the town council reserves the right to make changes to website policy at any time. So within the document, the council has the authority.
I thought that was my original thought. I thought that thought was original of me.
No, it is. It may have been yours, but it's placed in the document, and you can take full credit for it. We have a motion and a second to adopt the Tiffany website policy. Any further discussion?
I just have one question. Looking on page four, there indicates there won't be links available to the website for the various political candidates, individuals, or personal homepages. It all seems to make sense. The only question I have is the language at the bottom, where it refers to organizations or individuals that may be considered discriminatory on the basis of age, sex, and so forth. With that, for example, we honor the Knights of Columbus. I assume under that section, they wouldn't be allowed to have any type of notice on the website. I think the...
Yeah, yeah, there would not be, there would not be a link. I mean, the honor, the proclamation could be on the website, that's the town council business. There's not going to be a link, though, to the Knights of Columbus on our website.
Those are links, those are not ones that appear.
Yes. I think if we had a link to the Knights of Columbus, we would hear more than a little bit. I'm really positive of that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Policy passes. Town Council, discussion of financial town meeting.
That was placed on because the agenda came out before the county town meeting. And should there be a need to have continued it, a need for more funds or whatever, so was on, that's the purpose of this being on there.
So nothing to be discussed? Do you have the results of the board? Do you have? We're under that, so why don't, I'm sure you have the results of the...
The election for the moderator?
Yeah, that should be probably...
Yes, the board of candidates met today, and the results were certified. Michael Smith received 373 votes, Michael Burke received 312 votes, and there were a few write-in candidates. So Michael Smith has been certified on that election, as the winner on that election.
Thank you.
You know, I do think it might be appropriate for the council to thank Michael Burke for the conduct of the meeting.
I think we should probably send him a letter and thank him for his service on such short notice and for the job well done.
Very well done. He is...
If I may, Mr. President, thank you, Mike Burke, Darke Road. I also want to thank Nancy, Andy, his partner, Mike Versalove, and the other folks who were involved, because it really was a team effort to make it work. You know, it took a lot of work, especially with the last minute nature of part of it, so thank all of you for all of your support and assistance. Thank you for your support of me.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we send a formal letter to him on behalf of the council, thanking him for his service. And also, would be a plumb, with which he conducted that committee.
And the motion being seconded, further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. New business. John and Teresa Caderro of Nineteen Blueberry Lane request permission to hold a bike ride to benefit the Megan Caderro Memorial Foundation late September, early October.
Good evening, thank you very much for your time today. Three things I'd like to touch on that were not in your packet. First of all, the main priority for us will be safety. Safety to the riders, safety to the public. It is not a race. It is a ride, casual, leisurely. There is no pressure for anyone to... It is not a race, it is a ride, casual, leisurely, there is no pressure for anyone to take any chances. Every rider who will be required to be 18 or older, unless they are accompanied by a parent, will receive a very straightforward, I'm not, I didn't hand this out because it's not mine, it's, it's, it's from another ride that my wife will attend, but it is basically a notification to let everyone know, all the riders know, these roads are not closed. They will be, they'll be instructed to ride in single file, they'll have base, they'll be giving basic safety instructions that will be very clear and concise and to the point. And I wanted you to know that we, I have spoken to Lieutenant Jones, we, we will work out the details needed. If there are any, where it is prudent to have a detail, we will have one, where it is prudent to have a volunteer, it might not be a spot where riders are crossing the street or crossing an intersection, but where it's prudent to have another set of eyes who can concentrate on traffic, we, we will have that. And we also have a packet delivered to Chief Wardell down in Little Compton, we'll be working with him to cover the streets of Little Compton.
Chief?
Good evening, I have already spoken with Chief Wardell, looked out some of the logistics, and we're gonna work with him, I think we'll raise some numbers, estimates, it's in, it's in the fall, so we're ready to assist you in any way possible.
We don't have a date?
Yeah. Do you have a date now?
Yeah, the date is October 3rd, with the rain date of October 4th.
Mr. Caderro, this is where the best put-together proposals that the council has received. Well, then...
Teresa, I want Teresa to put that together.
Okay.
And I did have help from Sean Dean, I don't know if you remember, and I guess he's...
Yes, yes.
...very helpful.
It was extremely well done.
You sure the dates don't conflict with that 100-mile ride and everything? Okay, no, I just wanna make sure, I just wanna...
Which ride?
The, they have that century?
No, century rides in September.
Yeah, September.
Okay, I just, just wanna make sure, we cover the bases, or make sure we don't have conflict.
And we will, we are, we will have any, any insurance that is necessary to protect the town and personal property, and the riders, all the riders will, will sign a waiver. So we'll have insurance to cover anything that, God forbid, some, someone runs into the side of a car, you know, we'll, we'll have insurance for, for, for any, any, any property owned by the town, or, or the private citizens of the town.
You have a small, you have a small, medium, and a large proposal, is there any one of those selected, or you're gonna run all three at the same time?
We're gonna run all three, and the reason being, to get a good turnout of, of serious bikers, which will help us raise money, the 50-mile ride is going to attract the, the die-hard biker individuals and teams. 25-mile is for a novice like me, and the 12-and-a-half mile, we put on there because lots of folks were, were reluctant, they may, they may, they may be, you know, only several times a year, they get on their bike, we wanted to have a, a shorter route for those folks. And also, it's not in a packet, we discussed it with the recreation department, when we started talking about this, it's a small town where it spreads fast, many people who, who don't bike at all asked how they could participate, so we're probably going to do a stroll around the track at the recreation center for those who don't ride at all.
Hannibal, Hannibal Costa's gonna do the 50-mile.
Mr. Costa, you got your bike? We're riding next weekend.
You can go right across the street and grab a golf cart. You can do some moves with the golf cart.
I'll make a motion that we...
Be on duty then.
I'll make a motion that we grant the request to hold a bike ride...
Second.
On October 3rd, with a rain date of October 4th, based upon this proposal that has been submitted to us.
Second. We have a motion in a second, further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor.
Thank you very much. And you're all invited.
Hannibal's riding.
I'm gonna drive, I'm gonna drive the race track. I can do the, I can do the work.
Tiven and Usaka, request use of the town pond for annual British soccer camp to be held the 27th of July through the 31st.
Please, we have some wishy-washy... President Tiven and Usaka.
We held this soccer program in the past, past four years, five years?
Four that I know of.
Okay.
Basically, it's the same program that we, we run, it's all for kids in town. People, folks from England, coaches from England come in and get a different interaction, the kids really seem to enjoy it, it gives them a different outlook on soccer, and we've had some issues in the past where we've addressed water issues and breaks from the sun, and we've had no problems the past two years, it's been excellent. Actually, the attendance has increased so much that we contemplated having two weeks, but we really didn't know if we could handle it, so we just kept it to one week for this year. But we went from having 20 kids to 60 to 80 kids wanting to participate. So word of mouth spread, and the kids really enjoy it, and it's basically why we hold it, we do it.
It's too bad the good coaches speak Spanish and Portuguese. We have to go to England.
I'll make the motion that we request the use of town pond for the annual British soccer camp to be held on the 27th of July through the 31st.
I'll second that. We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Cook from the Recreation Commission, letter regarding length of time Stone Bridge Fire District would allow for development of a proposed new soccer complex.
The last time I was with you, you were concerned about the length of time, I went back to the Stone Bridge Fire District, they will give us two years from when we finalize the plan to start develop, stop it development.
Could you give us an overview of what needs to be done?
Basically, we're looking at, what I've gotta do is, I've lined up a landscape architect who's going to design the plans. I want, I wanna design it where I can rotate the field, so I can try and save some of the use of grass. And once I get that, that done, I better go back to Stone Bridge, they will say, they agree with it, I'm asking for too much, I'm not asking for enough, and once I get that done, then we start planning.
Is it a matter of...
Basically, it's...
Lining it, you're gonna, you're gonna place soccer on the grass, you're not gonna have to remove the grass?
No, no, basically, the area right now is all treated, we're gonna have to have the area cleared, a little bit of leveling done, and then grow grass.
Mr. Cook, how, how long do you think that whole process will take?
If you look at the fight, the total scope, which includes putting bathroom facilities in there, I think you're probably looking at five or six years before we raise the full money to get that. I still feel within two years, we're gonna be playing soccer there, we'll just use the Porter Johns as we do in different areas of town now. But eventually, to put the bathroom facilities in, I'm saying probably five or six years by the time we raise that money. If we can do it sooner, we will. I'm not, I'm not crazy, you don't have to say we're gonna do that in two years.
But the Stone Bridge proposal basically says that you have to get the, have to show substantial progress toward completion of the project, i.e. clearing the land and establish playing conditions must be made within the two years of the formal agreement. So, the concern of the Stone Bridge is that we have it in playing condition, and that isn't a complete, a complete compromise.
Right. They're just saying, you know, it, it can't look like it does today two years from now.
Yep. And if it does, we take it back.
Right.
How much area are you contemplating to clear of trees?
We're looking at something in the six to eight acre.
To clear of trees? I hope you talked to John Manchester, the town obvious, before you undertake that task.
Okay.
Well, that's, I mean, that is absolute, first of all, it's required under our, okay. It's, yeah...
None of this area is open now?
Six to eight acres of clearing, and you're estimating 10,000?
Is it thick forest, or not that?
No, most of the trees are probably 68 inches, right here. There's no big old, old growth trees up there, none of that. There's a lot of underbrush.
No doubt.
You know, I do think that we should have either a letter agreement with Stone Bridge, and I think it should be reviewed by the town solicitor. And whether it's a term sheet, or whether it's a letter agreement, sort of just outlining what we're doing, so that two years from now, or three years from now, people can say, here's the deal, okay? And it just should not be part of the town council minutes with regard to a letter.
You'll have to go back to the Stone Bridge Water District and get the plan approved, that hasn't been done yet.
No, but that could be put into a letter agreement that the town will do X, and that letter agreement should be approved by the council in a formal. So I would very much strongly put that into a motion that, no matter, well, I vote to the vote, but we should have a formal letter agreement, or a term sheet with them.
To be drawn up by the solicitor?
Mm-hmm.
Is, is that your motion, Mr. President?
Yes, it is. That would be, but I would make a motion that, that any agreement with the Stone Bridge Water Department be formalized in a letter agreement that would be presented, prepared by the town solicitor, presented to the town for adoption.
Can we get this thing moving forward, though? I mean, right now, we got a letter from the Stone Bridge Fire District, you know, stating that...
I've already got the landscape architect lined up, I've already got funds approved to pay them, once you, once you give me the go-ahead to do this.
That, that's my point. My point is, I understand wanting to have, you know, the detailed writing of what it is the agreement.
They can go ahead.
Yeah.
I mean, there's nothing preventing them from going ahead, but I think it should be a formal agreement with Stone Bridge.
No, I, I agree that we need a formal agreement, and I agree with the stipulation.
Stone Bridge is definitely, they want to write something up as far as terms.
Yeah.
I haven't spoken with them yet, because we haven't got to that point. But, you know, like I said, they haven't formally said yes or no to the agreement, because I haven't formally presented it to them. It's a concept idea, they're, they're agreeable to it, I better get the finalized plans to them and say, this is what I want to do, this is the need for that.
When do you have, when are you gonna get a finalized plan, Jack?
As soon, if I get an approval tonight, the contract will be signed with the landscape architect tomorrow.
Wait a minute. Contracts have to come before the town, council.
I'm paying for this, not with town money. This is being paid privately.
Go ahead. Is it being paid for, though, by the Recreation Commission?
No. It's not being paid for by the Recreation Commission, it's not being paid with Recreation money.
No, there's a difference. It's not being paid with Recreation monies, but is this something that the Recreation Commission is doing?
Yes.
Or a private group? If the Recreation Commission is doing it, it doesn't really matter what the money is. I mean, it's like if you get a grant, you get a grant for the federal government stimulus funds, that doesn't mean just because it's not town money that it's...
Are you telling me you need to approve the contract?
You should at least be seeing it, yes.
Look at it.
This is...
I'll be happy to look at it tonight.
Mr. Chief, I have a motion, though, with no second.
I'll second it. Second, please, second in front of discussion.
Yeah.
It's kinda like waiting for you before we, you know, continue with this matter, I mean. We should continue, we, we have a motion, trying to see how this, how this plays together. When do you feel you could have that letter drawn up for the, for Stone Bridge with an agreement? Or how are we gonna tie this together? Because it seems like we got three parties, and we gotta get them working, you know...
I don't need a letter of agreement on Stone Bridge yet, because I haven't agreed to anything yet.
Okay.
I've gotta, I've gotta get my landscape architect to give me the plan, and then I go before...
Okay.
...Stone Bridge and say, this is the plan I have, this is what I'd like to do, are you willing to give me this?
We could probably have the other two parts of this coordinated by the time, we just have to figure out how you're getting this done, and if it satisfies.
I, I think this is satisfactory, it's a fairly simple, straightforward thing, it's, it's for a concept plan, it's not a class one survey and whatnot, which I think is appropriate at this stage to get the approval.
And who, what is the firm?
Able Engineering.
Located with...
291 Long Highway, Little Compton.
St. Medeus, right?
Oh, yeah.
Probably, yes, St. Medeus, yes. And, I mean, you know, it's, it's for $1,985 for land evidence, cursory land evidence records, research, field survey location, site design, flag approximate boundaries, and prepare a concept plan of site layout and proposed band of boundaries. Plan will conform to a class four survey standard, which is essentially just a plan, which is what I gather is needed, because the letter from the Stone Bridge District at the moment is totally unimportant, just says, we'll do it pending approval of the plans, we're gonna catch 22. So I think at least if, if this plan does go forward, then if Stone Bridge is willing...
Did you say it was a class four survey?
Yes. So it's not a survey, it's a concept plan.
Yeah, it's not a survey. I mean, it does not meet the requirements of...
Right, which would have to be done later, but for this point, I think the key would be to get a plan that can be approved by the...
Although, he has budgeted $500 for land survey. It's not gonna be 500, I can tell you that.
No, a class A survey of this property will be several thousand when you get to it. But at this point, if the council is satisfied with this step, I would say that would be the way to go, then, then when Stone Bridge says okay, would be the point for me to talk to them and sit down and, the three of us sit down and say, okay, we need to finalize the agreement.
So, what we basically need to do tonight is, is give Jack permission to enter, I guess, into this agreement with private funds, to get the design to be submitted to.
And, and we might wanna be very specific and say the concept plan.
Yes.
With able engineering.
I think you just need to make sure that they understand that the town is not obligating its funds. This is, this is an estimate which could be exceeded, and the town is not committing to that.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the Recreation Commission be authorized to proceed with able engineering, to formulate a concept plan for the soccer development complex.
I have a second. There's a second to that. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I noticed one of the things you have, state grants, okay? Are you thinking of a BEM grant? Because there's no other...
I'm not, I'm essentially sure what state grants are gonna be available, but I know there are some out there, of varying sizes, and we will look and see what any state...
Well, I can just suggest one thing, and I hope you know what's coming.
Oh, I do.
But if you don't do something with Bogomash, you may not get a BEM grant, and they are the only ones in the state that give out recreation grants. And that's a 50, you have a $50,000 item, okay?
And we do it all over five years, it's $10,000 a year.
They, they don't have them every year, Jack.
Is every, every year?
No, I mean, it's...
There probably ain't gonna be any, they're gonna dry up like the rest of them.
But there are other grants out there.
But there, there's a motion in a second to allow us to proceed with able engineering to get the design concept for the proposed new soccer complex. If I could just do, amend that, also say, without obligating any town funds. Make that part of the motion.
And that, which I... And that, which I accept.
Okay. And that was from the second, so the motion of second stands. Further discussion being none. All those in favor? Senators? Thank you. Robert Martin, friends of Bogomash Park, request permission for motorcycle run fundraiser in August.
He's talking about Bogomash, and he needs money desperately. One of the things that I, that's a major project, I think that we most well know, I've taken on the part of the playground area to try to come up with the funds and develop that portion of the park. That's what I'm here for this evening. Thinking of pocket, you are, you've got a picture of the proposed item. That's only one section of the playground area. We're going to utilize some of the other stuff that's already there. That's where I'm at.
Well, I do have some questions about this, Mr. Martin.
Good.
This is a proposed motorcycle run.
Correct.
Okay. My first question is, how can we possibly do this under our ordinances?
Very simple. I don't, I don't see where our ordinances would prohibit this.
Well, have you looked at the noise ordinance recently?
Louise, I don't think that you and I want to get into that. These are all going to be licensed, registered motorcycles. That is not for your right to determine. If there's a problem with them, that's why we have a police department, and that's why we have a registry of motor vehicles. That's not my concern. My concern is to raise money for this Bogomash park.
Well, let me tell you that straight pipes motorcycles running through the town would require a noise variance along the entire route. And that's the ordinance, and we are asking the council to say, okay, ignore the ordinance.
Let me say to you, Louise, and you live in town, down on Main Road on any day, any sunny day, and you tell me, do you go out and stop the motorcycles that have straight pipes?
Do you think I'm a police officer?
Hold me to remind you. And that's why, that's not before this council here this evening. I'm here for a fundraiser. These things are all legally registered.
That's not the issue.
They're legally licensed, and they're legally insured. That's not my problem. I'm here to raise money.
It may not be your problem, Mr. Martin, but it's certainly our problem.
Well...
And, you know, the last recreation minutes that are in our pack did not give approval to this. They asked that you would come back with additional material.
I have been before the Recreation Commission last year. It was too late in the years to organize this. I have gone before the Recreation Committee since their last meeting. They, they all were agreement. I could not give them days and dates, because this is a very labor-intensive thing that I have to do here. And I have to make sure that it's coordinated, and that it doesn't interfere with other races or other bike runs, because you want the most participants that you can get.
Can I read you the minutes from the Recreation Committee?
Certainly may.
Okay, I think it's sort of at the end. Mr. Martin requested permission to explore a motorcycle fundraising run. He will gather information and present it to the commission at a later date. This is in our pack. It's the meeting of four-thirty oh-nine.
Okay. I, I brought this before the Recreation Commission at their last meeting. I don't know what the date of that was. They were all in agreement to it. I could not give them the specifics, but they gave the blessings to come through the council with it only because, and I don't really believe that I need to go before the council to have a bike run, but we're looking to have the fundraiser at Bogomash Park, where we would send hamburgers, hot dogs, maybe a pig roast, I don't know, that's up to the year. I'm not going to go through all this effort. I'm in trouble if this council and the people of town do not want Bogomash Park to be developed. If that's, if that's the case, then you know what? I wash my hands of it tonight, Louise.
You know, that's...
You know, Louise, I've got my face slapped many a times in this town. I'm not going to get slapped again.
Okay. I just read you the minutes.
Fine.
Okay? And I also express my concern about the ordinance that we have.
Chief. Has this proposal been discussed with your department at all?
Mr. Martin, they mentioned only that he was coming before the council. We hadn't went to any length of the conversation.
The bike route was not, has not been determined as of yet, and I did go to the chief, and the fact that he was there, and they both offered their assistance. Direct me if I'm wrong.
When was this, please?
When I was in your office, with you and the lieutenant.
Okay.
And you said you know everything, you could possibly do, to help me out with this thing.
I said I would assist if there was, if there was something going on here.
Correct.
I do know that we're going to, we will get a multitude of calls from other people. We have, on every, every event, we guide motorcycles. I understand they are registered, and people, bikes do get defective equipment tags, but that's the nature of the beast. If you're getting numbers like that, obviously, you couldn't stop every motorcycle. It's a worthy cause, but it's going to be, there's going to be destruction.
I understand. My, my point is usually when somebody comes before the council for approval, there's a plan in place, there's been discussion with your department, as we did with bike, the bike run, you know, the bicycles, and you've looked at a plan and see everything. This is a, a concept that's before us and not a plan, and I'm...
Call it if you will, there may be a concept on, but I'm not, I've gone to one motorcycle club, they're discussing it tonight as we speak, for that club to participate. I've been through a couple of motorcycle dealers, and they're willing to participate in this thing. But am I going to go through a route and get the police department and everyone else involved? I'm talking about maybe having a hundred to two hundred bikes, okay?
I understand what Bob, Bob...
Is it going to make some noise?
No, no. Bob, I understand what you're doing, and I'm, all I'm trying to say is, in fairness to everybody who comes before us, we kind of make sure that they have the plan in place, it's been discussed with the appropriate safety officials, and they come and ensure us that it's not going to be a problem, and then we give, you know, an up or down to that proposal, Bob. Yes, first of all, I mean, I can understand you coming because it's, it's a little more controversial than some of our other events that take place in town, and I understand...
But that's me.
No, 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 I'm not, Bob, not you. I'm talking about, I understand, the noise issue in motorcycles is something that's been, you know, a problem in town for many years, and I understand a motorcycle run, I understand the event to raise money, and so forth and so on. All I'm saying, Bob, is I really wish you had a plan that says we're going to do a run that's X number of miles, because now, your plan talks about going through Westport Dartmouth and so forth. Now, that's fine. That's where I think our chief has to be in contact with some other departments, to let them know this is taking place at a certain point in time. That's all I'm saying. And then he can either come back to us and say, I've been in contact, there isn't a problem, there is a problem. And, and if there's problems, we want to know about them before we give an approval, and I think that's all, that's all we're saying.
Let me just ask a question. Let me ask a question to the chief.
Before you do that...
We have fifty motorcycles tomorrow, and we decided to run from state line to certain point. Is there anything illegal about that?
Not at all.
Do I need the council permission?
Properly equipped?
Do I need the council permission? Do I need your permission? Do I need anybody's permission?
Do not. All the registered vehicles.
The only reason I'm here is I want to use Bogomash Park.
That's right, Bob.
Hot dogs and hamburgers. As far as whether there's motorcycles run down Main Road or not, it's not related to the schedule of this council.
I am, but when you do it as an organized event, it does become.
Why?
You know, Bob, all I'm trying to tell you is, because, because either the start or the finish is at a particular place, and it has to be sanctioned by the town, it does become that. I'm not disagreeing with you. It's the same way. If a hundred bicycles come through town tomorrow and take any route they want, there's, nobody can stop them or do anything as long as they're following the rules. But it's nice when somebody says, I'm bringing a hundred bicycles in town, and here's where we're going to go, and they set up the appropriate, they set up the appropriate safety provisions for this, so there isn't an issue. I'm sure if, you know, it would create a logistical problem if a hundred motorcycles tried to come through town because of how they're going to get split up and spread out, because as they hit intersections and so forth. This is one of the reasons why routes and so forth, the plan, discussions I had with the, with the department, and all I'm saying is, if you have a plan, a full plan together, it's the same thing. It's easier to look at something with documentation and say, here's what's happening, we can approve this, or we're not going to approve it. But without, without the whole thing there, and we've never, ever issued any of these, unless we've gotten the chief, the chief to tell us that he doesn't have a problem, or his department doesn't have a problem with what's trying to be accomplished. And that I can't get from the chief tonight, because I haven't given him a complete plan. That's all I'm saying, Bob.
I understand your point. Please try to understand why.
I do.
I am not going to go through all the time and effort, and then I'm going to come before this council, and Louise is going to say, but they may make too much noise.
And that's Louise. And Louise has to...
I am only one, but I, you can bet your life that I will, I will make that, and I'll tell you why. We had a motorcycle run last summer on a Sunday morning.
Did it?
Yes.
I'll bet it.
And, and let me tell you, it was, it was a very warm day. The people at St. Christopher's Church were in the middle of mass, and I'm sure you heard about this from Father Peter. You could not hear, people could not take communion, it was just so loud. We have a noise ordinance. Once we sponsor something like this, without a public hearing, we ask evolens, we ask the coffee, coffee roasters for noise ordinance variance. You want an exception, because this is a good cause. Ends do not justify means, but you can bet that I will raise these when you come back with a plan.
Just Louise.
And furthermore, Bob...
She got piece of recreation equipment.
Let me tell you something. I don't buy this. We could have a public hanging in this town and charge a hundred dollars. And we would get, we would, we could all put in our nominations. Would that be desirable?
I think it would win overwhelming.
Absolutely.
That piece of equipment is thirty-five thousand dollars just for that. We have zero in the kitty, zero.
Yeah.
And you're after recreation and everybody to get this park moving.
Bob, that's not the only alternative, wait a minute, that's not the only alternative for the Bogomash. It was not eighteen months ago, the Recreation Committee was in here before this council saying, we're going to raise eight-hundred thousand dollars. Some of us express some...
So did I.
Yeah, okay. Eight-hundred thousand dollars by selling pavers and benchmarkers and...
Trees.
Trees. None of that has been done. No, your proposal is two hundred motorcycles, or a hundred, coming through the town on a hot summer day. St. Christopher's Church is in the middle of their mass, and I don't know how many other churches, and I don't, I don't know how many residents will call him, and you know what? They will call the other council members. So don't think this isn't a problem or an issue.
I would like every one of those quolls to donate a hundred dollars.
Maybe that's the thing to do.
Give them your number, how's that?
Yeah, you go.
You won't be home.
Tell them they donate a hundred dollars, the road won't, will not go by their house or church.
I think I've got...
If I may, Mr. Martin, by place and circumstance, they've given the route, given the day, if we can look at some things. I mean, Bob, I understand everybody wants to go by the water and these other areas, but we do have to take that as a citizens' concern. And I do support you. I support the kids and the project, but just as far as caution to the wind, we can't...
I do not see it going anywhere. No matter what you try to do, there's a problem with doing it.
Oh, stop.
Thank you for your time.
Did you request for proposals? Leroy Kendrick's wastewater management requests to solicit competitive bids for the completion of Cananica Street sewer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
John Lynn Carter, wastewater superintendent, Leroy Kendrick, wastewater chairman, wastewater management commission. We're here tonight to request to go out to bid for the final section of the North Tiveni Neighborhood that we're using community block funds that has, has already been designed. We're requesting to go out to bid for that project, and we're also requesting to go out to bid to get engineering services to finish the...
Go ahead, go ahead. Want the noise down in the back.
Get engineering services to finish up the, the design for the, for the community block grant neighborhood.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request to solicit competitive bids for the completion of the Cananica Street sewer and the design services.
Second.
Motion of the second, discussion. Ask a question, please.
Yes.
I'm not going to give you the bad time I gave you last time. I'm sorry about that.
No, no problem.
We're going to be, as you know, Main Road's going to be, is being, going to be paved or whatever. Do we need to cross that in advance of that paving? Were these, these lightened?
No, not at all. We, we will be servicing with this final section, we will be servicing the Pringvera Restaurant, and they are in dire need of...
Yes. I'm sure you're going to get it done before the paving takes place. If you do, you, you know, if you're going to interfere with that, I'm sure you'll get it done in advance.
We're working with...
Not going, okay.
We're working with Steve Berluci. This is on a side road to Main. This does not go up Main Road at all, and we're working with him to get, once we're done, to get paving done for Cananica Street. We all know that, that Cananica Street is up and down all over the place, and it's a very well-traveled road, so we want to clear that up as soon as possible.
There's a motion of the second, signal for the discussion. All those in favor? opposed? Abstention.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Town administrator announcements, comments, questions?
The first announcement is that we are now recycling plastic shopping bags at the Department of Public Works. Anyone who wants to bring their shopping bags to the Department of Public Works office between seven AM and three PM, we will certainly accept them for recycling. I would like to thank Mr. William Gurrier, and I hope that I'm pronouncing that correctly. He was the gentleman that had the showing of paintings here that you see has now been taken, but he did leave one outside the clerk's office as a gift. So we'd like to thank him for that painting.
Should we send him a formal letter?
Yes, we should.
Delinquent tax notices. I indicated that we had just over twelve hundred to issue. Over seven hundred of them have already gone out, and we're making good headway with that. Building code board of appeals. I have completed the interviews and will be appointing the members to that board this week. Meds distribution drill, which is known as POTS. The Tiveni Emergency Management will be conducting a test of our medical distribution plan on Saturday, the sixteenth of May, at the Tiveni Mill School on Quintel Drive. This is going to give them mass quantities of medications out to the public. They're going to attempt to do this in, in an event that there is an emergency. It's a test, and the simulated medications will be dispensed between ten AM and eleven AM to all who come to the drill. We're urging all members of the public to go and take part in this, and if it's any incentive, the medications that will be distributed will be M and M's. That's all I have.
Jim, with regard to the financial town meeting and the vote on the abatements, have you thought, or have you had a chance to think, how that will flow through the budget? And whether you have any recommendations with regard to that, to the council? It could be a question that you could answer the next, at the next meeting, or whether you'd care to answer that now.
I'd rather, I'd rather answer it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, but because that resolution did not pass, it will certainly be an issue to be discussed.
Okay. So we can, at your next council meeting, you can add that to...
Okay, council announcements, comments, and questions?
I, I just have one.
I, I just have one question, and it's really, um, towards Councilor Durfee. What, and this is her favorite, not her favorite topic. It's one topic of her concern, and that's where do we stand with the skateboard park? I thought, don't we have the
Yes.
That runs out in June?
Well, I, I am in the process of, uh, scheduling a meeting. It was supposed to be this afternoon, but I did not get a, uh, call back from, uh, the DEM individual who is in charge of this. Um, at this point, there is an $18,000 grant, and the $18,000 has to be used by June 30th of 2010. This grant can be expended or expanded to up to $40,000, but obviously, and the money is still available. I, I double-checked on that. Uh, the meeting that I'm trying to schedule will be between the Recreation Committee, myself, and DEM. Uh, and there are some expenditures already counted. We've got about $7,500 that, uh, we can use toward that, uh, so far. So, there has been some work done, and we're, we're looking at moving further. Uh, one of the items is that there, uh, there is, I think it's Roosevelt Road that's going into the, uh, it's going into Sandywood Farms. It's going into, um, the library as well as the recreation. And we're ready to ask the DPW to help us cut in that road, but there are three different entities that have designs. And what I'm trying to do now is to ensure that the road is in the same place on everybody's design and who is responsible for putting that in. So, we are, we are moving forward on it. Uh, and we'll be reporting more on it in the future.
Jim, I'm very glad Cecil raised this. He took the word, but at the next meeting, as well as abatements, I think you'd need to keep us in. Yep.
Okay.
We'd be ashamed of you, but
Thank you, Cecil.
Because of, uh, our inability to make quicker. Any other council comments?
Yeah, I have, well, something. Uh, Mr. President, in our packets, we got a copy of a letter from the trust regarding, um, uh, health groups and health insurance. Are we a member of this government health group of Rhode Island, GHGRI, which they are now proposing to merge with somebody else? And I just wonder if we're involved in that at all.
Yes, we are. They are a health provider. The, uh, the
The trust?
GH, no, GHGRI. And because it's, it's getting so large, uh, they have asked the trust to meditate.
That sounds like a good idea.
It does.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any other comments then? Oh, where'd Andy go?
He's getting some things. You want him?
Well, he's up. He's up, and then he's up again.
Some stuff was coming over email.
He doesn't have anything. He doesn't have
Doesn't have any. Thank you.
Very good. I made a book in the adjournment. I don't think I don't have anything that
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to 4246502.
Second.
We have a motion of the second to enter into executive session in 4246582. If further discussion seen. On all those in favor, we're now in executive session.